All right, I'd like to call and order the regular meeting of the Cordova Recreation Park District on this Wednesday, August 21st, 2019 at 6:30 PM.
Thank you. To lead us in the pledge of allegiance this evening, I'd like to welcome to the podium Bonnie Dominey, who is the Chairperson of our PMRID Oversight Committee, as well as Breka.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Did you want to say a few words, Bonnie?
I'd just like to say thank you for inviting me here today. I was in the park just the other night, and I've been in my neighborhood 25 years. When I moved in, my neighborhood was in transition from families that had already grown, and we hadn't had a lot of new families in. And the other night at the park, while I was admiring the beautiful new sidewalks and the little library, I was just remarking how wonderful it was to see the park completely full of families having fun and kids laughing and skating and playing basketball. The whole place was being used, and it was just really wonderful to see. And so, we really enjoy our parks, and I'm glad that we have people like you to make it possible for all of us. So, thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie. Yes, it is a nice park. Yes. All right, roll call.
Yes, we received advance notification that Director Lineback would be late this evening. Director Reyes?
Here.
Secretary Sloan?
Here.
Vice Chair Danzel?
Here.
And Chair Yearwood?
Here.
All right, so Board disclosures on action items. Does anybody have anything they need to disclose or wish to disclose? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to Item B, the Consent Calendar.
Item B, Public Comment Period?
Oh, Public Comment, sorry.
Is members of the public may address the board on district topics not listed on this agenda. Speakers are limited to three minutes. It is a violation of state law for the board to discuss or take action on non-agenda items. Board members may only briefly ask clarifying questions or refer the matter to staff, and I do not have any speaker cards at this time.
All right, then perhaps we'll move on to the consent calendar instead. All right.
Thank you. Consent calendar items are considered administratively routine and will be acted upon in one motion unless separate action on a specific item is necessary. The Chairperson will consider any requests for discussion on the items prior to approval of the consent calendar, and this evening we have four items for your consideration.
All right, any discussion? Oh.
I would, yes. Chair Yearwood, I'd like to pull C3.
All right.
Other than that?
Nope. All right, wouldn't you be cared to make a motion on C1, 2, and 4?
I will move that we approve calendar, consent calendar items C1, C2, and C4.
All right, motion by Director Reyes, a second?
Second.
Second by Secretary Sloan, roll call vote.
Director Reyes?
Aye.
Secretary Sloan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Danzel?
Aye.
Chair Yearwood?
Aye.
And Director Lineback is absent.
With regards to C3, Chair Yearwood, I just have a quick question for our administrator, I mean, our general manager. Here we are, we're going to be receiving Title II properties located at Villages of Zinfindale, and I just wanted to make sure, I know we've always been concerned with, this is going to be maintaining these small pieces of property or whatever, and I just wanted to make sure that we had enough funding, you know, that would allow us, you know, I know we're tight at the Villages of Zinfindale, so I just wanted to see how staff saw this.
So, we are obligated to accept those parcels for ownership based on the park development agreement that we signed with Elliott Homes.
Years ago, yes.
Yeah, in like 2002, and so it was one of the corridors that was identified. However, in working through the design of that project, Christina and Jim Morales and Martin Fonseca were very involved in making sure that we did a water-efficient landscape as much as possible to, you know, be futuristic in our planning and efficient. And so, that much has been done, and yes, that parcel was included in the original square footage that was included as part of that original CFD funding amount, but admittedly, the overall funding amount was, it wasn't enough, really, and in, at that time, the unit costs that they used. But on the positive side, these two parcels surround the new Veranda development, which is bringing in a lot more new residences that haven't, we haven't been collecting taxes from in the past because they hadn't yet been developed, so.
So, and it's my understanding that, you know, it's one thing, we're always very tight with Villages of Zinfindale, and so I believe staff would have some form. Would you like to help us address this?
Yeah, and so, we agree. I think that it is known that that area of the district is, has more expenses than we're bringing in for us to support it. Coincidentally enough, Finance Manager Matt Gadel is going to be having a conference call with our tax assessors tomorrow, actually, discuss what kind of proposal we could look to go forward with to discuss that more seriously and possibly get it out for a vote in the near future. So, the preliminary discussions with our tax engineers about what our options are to look at raising those assessments to get to the point where we're at a level of standard that's acceptable for us to maintain, but from there, we will determine what work is involved to get us there, and we'll have to back it out with a timeline to make it so that it's appropriate for staffing to manage that load, as well as the fact that, you know, there's factors that we need to consider, like going out to the community and doing a survey. We need to do a lot of preliminary work in order for us to get there. So, the wheels are moving, and tomorrow is going to be the first date for us to start activating that discussion. So, that's good.
Thank you. Okay, that's good. Just want to keep that always in front of us. Without much ado, I'll go ahead, and unless there's any follow-ups, I go ahead and move that we adopt, that we adopt Resolution Consent Calendar C3.
All right. Motion by Director Reyes.
Second.
Second by Secretary Sloan. Roll call vote.
Director Lineback has joined the dais, so I will call the vote. Director Reyes?
Aye.
Director Lineback?
Aye.
Secretary Sloan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Danzel?
Aye.
And Chair Yearwood?
Aye.
It's very nice. I drove by it a couple of times.
Yeah, that'd be really nice. I thought, right away, I thought, but when I saw the CFD, I thought, oh, we better have a plan so that we can make sure that we make.
There's a lot of rock. There's a lot of rock.
A lot of rock.
There is, yes.
Rock can require a lot of water.
No, no. Unless we bought the wrong kind or something, yeah. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, well, seeing there's no presentations, we'll move on to E, Community Reports.
Thank you. Item E1 is a standing committee, the Budget and Finance, on August 13th, and I'll turn it over to Directors Lineback and Reyes.
Could you please start? No problem. We met with staff, who, we had an agenda, as you would see, of about six different discussion items. Worked very closely with looking over the fiscal year recap and the final budget, and we were able to give Matt, our Finance Manager, some clarification questions here. But all in all, if we looked at it, it's a really, he probably must have had a great time putting it together, because it looks very, very good, and we're very proud to, to, you know, to totally support the efforts here. The other, the third item was the district fee schedule. Very confident, staff brought up ways to simplify, make it easier for our constituents and our residents to be able to access our programs, and at the same time, did great research on the fees and got it to where I think it, I think it's really a lot more easier for expectations of cost, and I wanted to commend staff and how they were looking at what was the best way and what were the items that, and the programs that needed, activities that needed a little bit more work on. So, I really want to commend Park Director and Park Director Nun Jill for the hard work that she and her team had put to it. I think we're, I'm pleased. We did agree that we were pleased with how well it worked.
Yeah, I'll just add a couple of things, notes I took at the time. One is, you know, that we did end the fiscal year, you know, in very good condition, in a way that was slightly better than budgeted, which is what you like to see. So, that was good news. I know we're going over the final budget, you know, tonight, so. I thought, as far as the fee schedule, which I guess is going to come to the full board in September, I was impressed by the addition of a STEM program for the kids, and I also, that there is a plan to standardize the golf fees, which I think makes a ton of sense, so I was glad to see that as well. Regarding the park impact fees, I guess that's still sort of up in the air. You know, the district had hoped for a resolution with the County of Sacramento that didn't, or with the BIA, and they actually came back with more questions and, you know, covering the same ground over and over again. And all I can say about that is that you cannot control what other people do, so you have to go with the flow, and that the district staff has just been taking it as it comes, handling their questions, taking them seriously, and just engaging in a positive dialogue. And so, even though it hasn't yet come to resolution, it's not through the efforts of the district that that hasn't happened yet. So, and, let's see. Yeah, the real estate advertising is also on this budget, but there was, as far as audit services are concerned, the Finance Committee agrees with the recommendation of the district that we continue with the same auditor, who has done a good job switching out the senior auditor position for us until, for another three years, and then absolutely going out for an RFP at that point. So, under the fairly standard practice of changing your auditor at least once every 10 years.
All right, thank you. Any question?
Sure.
You mentioned something about a STEM Academy that we're going to be putting on?
STEM.
STEM. Is that the science, technology, engineering, and math?
Yeah, we are offering preschool STEM program at White Rock.
There's a new term called STEAM. You've heard of it?
I have.
Well, why wouldn't we go with the STEAM, because you add art to the picture?
It's something for us to consider in the future.
Thank you.
You bet.
Maybe they already do art? I don't know. All right, just, hey, preschool, usually arts included, so. All right, that's it. All right, we'll move on to Public Hearing, Item F.
Thank you. This is the portion of the meeting with the public hearing for our final budget adoption. Item F1 is to adopt Resolution 19/20-15, approving the final budget for the Cordova Recreation and Park District for fiscal year 2019-20, and authorize the General Manager to file with the County Auditor Controller.
All right, we open the public hearing at 6:45.
And I'll turn it over to Finance Manager Matt Gadel.
All right, good evening, Chair Yearwood and Board members. I am pleased to present to you tonight the final budget for fiscal year 2019-20. It's been a very long process. It's about six months from beginning to end, and it always feels amazing when we finally reach today. Really does. I'm very excited that the process has been efficiently condensed down to one public hearing instead of the nine that we typically have for individual funds, so I'm sure we're all excited about that. Yet, the public and the board and staff still has an opportunity to speak on anything within the budget, a particular fund, or anything within, so. But overall, the process has been streamlined. So, here we go. So, let's take a look at the preliminary budget, and that was approved on June 19th of this year. The board held a workshop that reviewed all of our goals and priorities for the year. We discussed operation costs and the list of projects that were proposed. We discussed the variances from the previous year and compared it to what was being proposed, and finally, this was the end result for the preliminary budget that was approved. That night, we also discussed next steps, and what was included in those next steps was an opportunity for changes, and so I have a few of those that come forward between the preliminary and the final. And here we go. So, staff is proposing a reduction, that's right, a reduction, in salary benefits and taxes. We had a fantastic find in our unfunded pension liability. Calpers and the actuarials over there are constantly adjusting that, and typically it goes up, but in this instance, it actually went drastically down. It reduced it. And that item was brought to you last month in July, that we discussed that unfunded pension liability and the amount, and so we had a reduction in the tens objects. So, we're very happy about that. In the twenties, in the services and supplies, we're proposing $125,875 increase, and there are some components to that. I'll go over that here. So, we added in some research costs for the by-district elections. We're going to take a look at that. We took, we extracted out the active net fees. Prior years, we had it netted with our revenue, and so whatever our revenue came in, we just included the fees on top of that. And so, this time, we're going to give 100% of revenue to the recreational areas, and then put the expense in the expense account for what it actually costs to do active net. So, we're going to budget $50,000 and see what it actually costs. We started a new unit for IT itself. Human Resources was kind of managing the IT portion, and that's kind of gone to my department now for Rick Smith, our finance or management analyst has taken on that. And we created a new unit, and something slipped through the cracks, and that was our Comcast cost, and so we have to obviously pay our Comcast bills. And so, that's $25,000 that we have to add in that we missed. We're increasing our water utility by $21,000, and that's because we share a well with the school district at Dave Roberts Community Park, and there's discussion about separating that and having it metered, and so we calculated that out, and it's going to be about $21,000 to water that particular park for the year. Received our insurance information after preliminary was submitted on what it actually would be, so it was higher, so we have to add that in as well. And then we have some miscellaneous items that total about $10,000. Golf course maintenance wanted to add a project to fix a buckling pathway that has a lot of people walking on it, so has something that needs to get done, and we added two conferences, so a total of $10,000. We do have a reduction. We moved our golf cart lease of $46,000. We had it in the twenties. We're going to put it in the thirties as a lease, a debt obligation lease payment, and so that's going to be knocked down to the next category, which will go right now. So, any questions on the twenties, services and supplies? That all totals about $125,000 right there. Okay. So, like I said, our debt obligation is going to go up. The good news is, it's not the full $46,000. That's what we budgeted for. The actual lease came in lower at $39,600, and so that's what that is. And so, total, with our pool bond payment and our Mather Sports Loan restructured payment, and plus the golf cart lease, it's $660,000 for the year. That's what our debt obligation is. Capital outlay. So, we do have a bump in projects compared to the preliminary list. Those preliminary projects are still going forth. We talked about it a lot at our workshop and the preliminary budget hearing, and so those projects are still in existence, and we have three more that I like to talk about that we're going to add. There was discussion about immediate need for repairs of the roof and the fascia and the gutters at the Neil Orchard Senior Center, and so we're going to have to add that in, and it's about a $50,000 chunk for that project, and so we put that into the budget. The backflow installation that we talked about preliminary didn't have a cost figure to it. It did not have that cost amount. We talked about the project, but found out later what was the $68,000 I thought was going towards the backflow installation was actually for the maintenance and the permits and the checking of that. So, the $50,000 to actually install the five were separate, and so that $50,000 price tag wasn't in the original budget. So, we're adding that to do the five parks. And then finally, we have an encumbered project at the Hagan Community Center Building, too, the windows. The project was complete, but the bill wasn't paid until July, and so we have to shift that $12,000 into this year to pay that bill, and that's for the blinds on the inside of the windows. So, we totaled up the 50, the 50, and the 12, and that's how we came up with the additional $112,000. So, that's our capital improvement project. And the schedule is in the board package, too, if you want to see the complete list, but it's the preliminary ones that we approved, plus those three. For equipment, it's the same, except that we add in, we added in an aerator. I thought it was a stand-up mower, but it's actually an aerator that parks equipment wants, and that's what that's for, for the 4300. So, it was fine. We had enough funding to cover that cost. And then, finally, all those impacts hit the bottom line, and so that hits the fund balance. Initially, we were going to use $408,000 in our preliminary budget, mostly due to rollover projects that we're going into the next year, repurposing that money. And as a matter of fact, I want to quickly chat about that. Sorry, I have a slide I had put in here. This was our fund balance district-wide at the beginning of the year. It was $8.8 million. So, that's kind of our assets minus our liabilities, our equity, and it's practically our cash balance. So, that's what we had as a district. And then throughout the year, we received our revenues, and we spent some money, and that netted out to an additional $1.4 million that we received during the year last year. So, we ended up at $10.2, and that's what their, I know Reyes and Chair Lineback were talking about, the budget committee that we discussed, this positive year. But, we didn't finish all the projects. So, technically, there was $644,000 of six projects that we needed to do still and pay the bills for the following year. And so, in reality, we netted a positive $757,000. So, I'll go back to this chart. All the changes total $111,000 in the positive, so we're going to use $297,000. But technically, we're using $644 from previous year, so you could say that we're having a positive 347 if you do the math for the current year, if you take out the projects. So, I know, it's a lot of bouncing ball going on, but it's positive. Did the best I could on that. It's, yeah, it's.
It's tricky to explain.
It is tricky. It is tricky.
But we actually ended up with a positive fund, an increase to our fund balance last year. We will have an increase to our fund balance in the coming year, but because of the shifting of the projects, it looks like it's a deficit. It's not a deficit. It's crazy.
If we would have done those projects, if we would have spent the bills in, by June, the $644,000, this would be a positive 347,000 if you just looked at our current spending plan, so you could look at it like that. Guess I could have just said that. Easy one, no change in our commodities, as the golf course plan is still that, until Marco, our new superintendent out there, gets a good handle on what he wants, and then he can come forth with some changes to that proposal, and we can discuss that in the future. And then we also added some revenue. Negative in this case is good, right? A negative number of revenue is a positive. And this is an increase for our new CFD assessment 2018-1 that we just recently passed. We are taking on two parks, not necessarily next year, but early of the following year, and then we don't get our tax payments until the following following January, and so we want to be ahead of that. And so, we're going to collect a portion of that when we figure out what it's going to be for those four or five months that we're going to have prior to that January, and that's $147,000. So, we're going after the homes that are built and then the undeveloped parcels to cover that cost. So, how do we do bottom line? We balanced. Yay. So, overall, those are the changes that we have from the preliminary workshop and the hearing that we had, and those are the changes to the final budget overall. All positive, and we're ready to rock and roll. So, that is my presentation. The staff report, the resolution, the full final budget book, the schedules, the county forms, everything is in the board package for you to review, and if you have any questions, I will be here.
All right. Well, thank you. Anyone from the public wish to make any comments about the budget, final budget? All right, seeing none. If I can get my phone to come on to tell me what time it is. Close the public hearing at 6:54. All right, anybody on the board have any questions, comments?
I, sorry, I have a question on the fly. How many full-time employees are funded in this budget? Not FTEs, but actual full-time employees that receive, you know, full-time benefits? Fifty-three, okay. And that's an increase of three, and that was what was planned during the preliminary discussions?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, anyone else have any questions? Secretary Sloan, no? Okay. Oh, you want to make, all right, well, definitely we'll hear a motion.
I want to move the Board of Directors adopt Resolution 19/20-15, approving the final budget for the Cordova Recreation and Park District for fiscal year 2019/20, and authorize the General Managers to file for the County Auditor Controller.
All right, a motion by Secretary Sloan, a second?
Second.
Second by Director Lineback, roll call vote.
Director Reyes?
Aye.
Director Lineback?
Aye.
Secretary Sloan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Danzel?
Aye.
And Chair Yearwood?
Aye.
All right.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Good job. Good job. Staff.
The whole team's ready to go.
To all staff, good job. Good job. Last year was stellar.
Every time, every time.
Yep, good job. I forgot my clapper. I have it assigned to my Finance Committee.
More cowbell. All right, we're going to move on to the regular calendar, Item G, G1.
Thank you. Item G1 is to adopt Resolution 19/20-16, adopting an appropriations GAN limit for fiscal year 2019-20, and I'll turn it back over to Finance Manager Matt Gadel.
Yep, still here. All right, so, as we all know, there is a taxing limit that is put on our agency that is calculated, and we can't go over, and that's called the GAN limit. That amount is inflated annually by combination of the change of our per capita income and also population either between the City Ranch of Cordova or the unincorporated portion of the County of Sacramento, whichever one is greater. During the exit interview with the auditors last year, there was discussion about the calculations and throughout the years and how it was done, and I used different sources. I was using the City Ranch of Cordova to get their population numbers. I was using the CPI from the San Francisco urban cities, like we use for our CFDs to get, you know, the income level, and so our auditor strongly recommended that we use one sole source for that. And the State of California actually has a letter that they produce every May that speaks to all those areas. So, they provide estimates of the population, even though they might not always be correct, but they're estimates, and they'll catch up. And then also about the per capita personal income level. And so, I went back and did an exercise of taking a look at what that was, and it's that worksheet's on page 110 of your board package, and I also have a snippet here for you. And so, these are the totals. So, I went back to 2012 and 13. It was a good year, and started with that. So, our limit was 8.5 million back then, and I used the state method, and then I used what the method I used with the CPI and the City of Roseville or the City Ranch of Cordova and that kind of thing. And so, I was off by 196 compared to the state in 1314, but then it went back the other way. I was above 37,000 in 1415, and it kind of went back and forth until 1718 was a big year where there was a big difference. City Ranch of Cordova showed a 6.5% increase in population, but the estimate that the State of California was showing in that report was a 1%, and so that was a pretty big difference, and that's what created the, me to go higher on the, on the limit. And so, I'm thinking next year that the state estimate's going to be much higher because it's going to catch up to what it actually should be, so. But we'll be on track. I'm just going to use this as the sole source moving forward. So, this year, I took a look with that letter, and they use January to January as their data, and so the population change in the county went up 4,000 people, which was 0.62% in the unincorporated area, and then the population in the city went up about 1,300 people, so it was 1.86%. That's the higher, so that's what we'll use as a ratio, and then the per capita is just a g- And then the per capita is just a given number for the state average, and it was 3.85%. And multiply those two together with the City Ranch of Cordova, and then we can apply it to our previous correct beginning balance. So I took what it was last year, how I calculated it. I used the accounting audit adjustment with the new method, subtracted the 799, and then came up with the 11.1 million to start, multiply by the ratio. And then our new limit for 1920, the correct limit is 11.7 million. So that's what our limit is. All those years, we still never came close to going over, so that was never an issue. And it's a common practice to go back and check to make sure that all those statistics and everything's right. So we're good. And that's where we are with the GAN limit.
All right. Anybody have any questions?
I just have a question about the anticipated growth in the district and the growth in the numbers of people being assessed because of the new development and huge increase in population. Could that get us in trouble with this GAN limit down the road?
Well, I'm hoping the inflation of the... Using the City Ranch of Cordova, if that's where the growth is taking place, is enough to cover that. And I have a conversation with the auditors, think that the assessment should not be included as part of the calculation, only property tax plus any profit made from recreational programs, which they're pretty much, you know, money in, money out. And so I am further looking into that. Every agency does it differently. Some add in their special voted-in tax assessments, and some don't. Right now, I am, just to be safe, but if it comes down to that, where we have to really make a decision, maybe we find out the true answer. But I'm getting different conflicted information. But I'm playing the safe side by putting it all in there for now.
Thank you.
We'll keep an eye on it.
All right. Anyone else? All right. Anybody care to make a motion?
Go ahead. I move that the Board of Directors adopt Resolution 19/20-16, adopting the appropriations, i.e., GAN, limit for fiscal year 2019/20 of 11,783... 11,783,027 dollars.
All right. Motion by Director Lineback?
Second.
Second by Director Reyes. Roll call vote.
Director Reyes?
Aye.
Director Lineback?
Aye.
Secretary Sloan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Danzel?
Aye.
And Chair Yearwood?
Aye.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Item G2.
I don't think it's me, right?
Nope. Yeah, don't go anywhere.
I'll put that picture back up here in a second.
Thank you. Item G2 is to authorize the general manager to execute a construction services agreement with CBH Construction in the amount of $43,198.60 for the fascia and gutter replacement at the Neil Orchard Senior Activity Center. And I'll turn it over to Park Services Superintendent Jim Morales.
Good evening, Chair Yearwood and the members of the board. I'm here to recommend the approval of the contract with CBH Construction for repairs at the Neil Orchard Senior Activity Center. Upon inspection, we found mold, rot, and significant wear of the 451 feet of gutters and fascia. The fascia is structurally unsound and creating a safety hazard, and the gutters are no longer functioning properly. So that's why we're bringing this forward this evening. Basically, that concludes my report. If you have any questions, I'm available.
All right. Anybody have any questions?
No question about... Is the roof in bad shape? Was it... Is that what was clogging up or what was causing the problem with the gutter?
It's more to the gutters. The gutters not working correctly and were clogged, and the water was in, you know, spilling over for all these years and rotting out the fascia which holds the gutter.
So do we know what it was clogged with? Is it just leaves?
Just debris, leaves and stuff in the trees.
Stuff from the roof?
Yeah, just normal leaves and things like that.
So are we thinking about maybe doing the mesh covering the tops?
Um, we didn't include a mesh covering like, you know, like the... That on there, but we are going to include in our maintenance plan a gutter cleaning on a regular basis, so that will help.
Okay. Yeah, we were out when the little shed was created for the ceramics and noticed the gutters were just full of leaves and stuff like that, so... How old is the senior center? Anybody? Who was that? How old is you?
Mid-'90s?
No, mid-'80s, right?
Eighty-six?
I don't know exactly. I don't.
Just curious if that is like the first time we've had to do anything like that. So that's all. Just wondering how old the building is.
Yeah.
All right, that's it. Any other questions, comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I move the Board of Directors authorize general manager to execute a construction services agreement with CBH Construction in the amount of $43,198.60 for the fascia and gutter replacement in the Neil Orchard Senior Activity Center.
Motion by Vice Chair Danzel. Second?
Second.
Second by Director Reyes. Roll call vote.
Director Reyes?
Aye.
Director Lineback?
Aye.
Secretary Sloan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Danzel?
Aye.
Chair Yearwood?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, we're moving on to item G3.
Thank you. Item G3 is to approve the release of a request for proposals, RFP, for construction management services for the Cordova Community Pool Replacement Project. And I'll turn it over to Manager Laura Taylor.
Good evening, Chair Yearwood and members of the board. Yes, we have a new pool that is going just around the corner for us, right? And we are estimating that the day-to-day management of the pool construction project will require approximately 20 hours a week. And the park planning department will need to add capacity to be able to ensure that that pool project is monitored with the proper level of attention on a daily basis. A contracted construction manager for the pool project will act as the district's daily representative and the conduit and manager of information that is flowing back and forth between the general contractor, myself, and the LPA, our architectural consultant. LPA will be involved in reviewing submittals, and they will make construction observations, but they will not be the daily person managing the paperwork of the project. The way that we have written this RFP allows flexibility so that a qualified, either large or smaller, construction management firm could submit and qualify. We are going to contract for the materials testing and the special testing separately and just make sure that we're reviewing those test results as they come in to make sure that those things are passing. The Cordova Community Pool Replacement Project anticipates approximately 250,000 for construction management services that would be spread across the fiscal year from 2019 through the end of construction of 2021. If this is approved, the proposals will be due on September 12th of 2019. And at that point, then, there will be a selection committee that will review those submittals. And we've invited, as part of that selection committee, one of our project team members from the City of Rancho Cordova, Megan Siren. She sat on our design team throughout the whole design of this project, and she has... I'm grateful that she's accepted to be on that committee. So then we will select the top-ranked firms from the submittals and then bring in firms for interviews if that's necessary, and we are planning on it in our schedule. And so that's all I have to report. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them for you.
All right. Any questions?
No.
No? Anybody? Oh, you do? Okay. Director Lineback?
I was curious if LPA provides this kind of service, and if so, are they to be permitted to submit an RFP?
I did, in the initial putting together of this concept, talk to them about it, and they were adamant that they felt that it should be a separate standalone consultant to avoid any conflict of interest.
That was my concern. Thank you.
Yeah. That's good.
Yeah, all right. Any other questions or concerns, comments? Anybody care to make a motion?
I'll move that the Board of Directors approve the release for a request for proposal, RFP, for construction management services for the Cordova Community Pool Replacement Project.
I'll second that.
Motion by Director Reyes. Second by Secretary Sloan. Roll call vote.
Director Reyes?
Aye.
Director Lineback?
Aye.
Secretary Sloan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Danzel?
Aye.
And Chair Yearwood?
Aye.
All right.
Yay, we're going to start seeing a lot of this come on our agenda. Wonderful.
All right. Moving on to item G4.
Thank you. Item G4 is to approve the release of a request for statement of qualifications, SOQ, for miscellaneous consulting services. And I'll turn it back over to Laura.
Thank you. Okay, so the California Government Code requires that the selection of architectural, engineering, environmental, land surveying, and construction project management services be on the basis of demonstrated competence and professional qualifications. Local agencies may not use cost as the sole basis for selecting such consultants. So release of this request for statement of qualifications, or SOQ, and the resulting submittals that we get will provide a roster of firms with expertise in various professional categories that then we could use those to select from for... To help us where maybe the professional and technical staff don't have an expertise in that particular area. And it will help us in perhaps designing a scope of a project or in coming up with an accurate cost estimate or helping us obtain building permits, which sometimes, even though it might be a simple project, it requires an architectural stamp or those kinds of things is where it will become really helpful to get... To help us get our work done. And then the staff will create a roster from all these consultants that submit their information. And then from that, when we have a need for, say, an architectural consultant, we can go to that. And then depending on what we anticipate the cost of the fees for that project would be, we would either just select directly one that we feel is most qualified based on the information that's submitted, or if it's a higher fee project, then we might select like three of them and then choose to have them submit proposals that would further define how they would approach the project and what their fee would be. Then we can negotiate a contract from there. So this approach to consultant selection creates efficiencies similar to those created by the district's adoption of the California Uniform Public Construction Cost Accounting Act, otherwise known as KUPCA. That allows for negotiated contracts for construction projects less than 60,000 and the establishment of a contractor's list for informal bids for projects under 200,000. The KUPCA requires an annual notification to potential contractors, inviting them to submit written information so their company can be added to the district's list of qualified bidders. So this would be a similar approach, only instead of cost, we would be asking them to renew any information they have about their firm and, of course, making a notice so that other people that might want to add a new submittal could do so. So these professional consulting services will supplement the knowledge base of CRPD's professional and technical staff, and it's really going to help us ensure quality, code compliance, and implementation of best practices. It'll also make it easier for us to comply with the state law for qualifications-based selection. So each project budget that we put together for the annual budget request has considered and included consulting costs in the total project budget. So if it's needed, depending on the project. And so therefore, the majority of the consulting costs that would arise out of using this roster will have already been covered in the approved annual budget because those costs have already been included. And if a project comes up that we didn't anticipate, then, of course, the general manager will take the appropriate steps to make sure that the board is notified and an appropriate board meeting or whatever the most appropriate way to handle that is. So if you have some questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions? All right. Anybody care to make a motion?
I move the Board of Directors approve the release for request...
It's a good idea.
For the statement of qualifications, SOQ, for the miscellaneous consulting services.
Motion by Vice Chair Danzel?
Second.
Second by Director Lineback. Roll call vote.
Director Reyes?
Aye.
Director Lineback?
Aye.
Secretary Sloan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Danzel?
Aye.
Chair Yearwood?
Aye.
Thank you. I think that's being proactive. Very good. Ready, efficient.
All right. Move on to item G5.
Thank you. Item G5 is to adopt the district budget and finance policy regarding real estate advertisement. And I'll turn it back over to Manager Godell.
All right. So the district ran into an interesting situation, and we view it as an opportunity, actually. Developer signs have been popped up on specific parts of our property, specifically the center property. Notice there's developer signs. We found out that is actually on our property, close to the road. And instead of immediately have them removed, we decided to explore of, well, can they stay? And then we work out an agreement. And after doing some research, we actually established an agreement back in 2006 with an advertising company allowing such activity. And so what we want to do to make it right is to create a board policy speaking to exactly that, set the parameters. And we looked at other jurisdictions nearby on what those are and also the laws and regulations of the City Ranch of Cordova and the County Sacramento, and incorporated those into the policy. We didn't put the fees in there. We would put the fees in our fee schedule, not be part of policy, but of course, we'd ask for an appropriate amount that makes sense and keep it standardized. But otherwise, we're just thinking about that this could be a win-win for developers and for us to have an agreement and everyone be happy. So that's what this is. This is a policy to allow real estate signage on our property. Of course, we're not going to have all our parks have signs pop up all of a sudden. It would be something we would discuss and have on appropriate spots on specific properties, like the center property that's vacant, and have a good relationship with our developers. So that's kind of our goal. And that's where we are. Any questions?
Any questions? Director Reyes?
Yes. I remember we had discussed this, and one of the things we wanted to make sure was that we ran it by our legal to be able to see the ramifications. I know Director Lineback had brought a very good issue up there, asked to say, you know, how would the revenues that are maybe generated by this, were they going to be taxable? You know, how would they affect our tax status and all this? And then the other thing is, yes, clarification here, as you had given us. Right now, it's to be able to... For the center property, right? And that it would only be for developers or real estate, not just a restaurant here and there and...
Correct. Real estate.
...the whole thing of... Yeah. Real estate only. Am I right?
Correct. Yeah, only real estate development signs.
Yeah. So did we get to check with Mr. Thurbin?
Yeah, we did. General Manager Patrick Larkin reached out to Bob Thurbin, our attorney, and we did a good response. and we did get a response. There is a taxable possessory interest, but that usually lies with the concessionaire or the person that's, that's doing the property, so they're the ones that have to report, and then they have to pay the tax. In short, I'll give you his response here, I pulled it up. People with a taxable possessory interest are subject to the tax, not the agency. You see this mostly where public agencies enter into a long-term lease that provide individuals with a durable right to use public land for profit. An example might be the former shooting range. I suspect they pay property tax on their interest in that leasehold. Another good example is a long-term concession licenses that are granted by public agencies. In those cases, the concessionaire likely pays property tax on their possessory interest as part of their business operations. As far as the real estate signs go, the interest isn't exclusive, and in our attorney's view, does not meet the test of durable, so there is not a taxable possessory interest, but even if there were, it's the person who holds the possessory interest that pays the tax, not the public agency. That was the response.
So in that respect, what, what would happen is, we, with this policy, right, we set the parameters as to saying, you know, in this specific site, it would be real estate connected, you know, but it will not be us that will be negotiating these fees, right? I mean, will it be?
No, our goal is to ha, to contract with basically a concessionaire, a marketing advertising company, that they, they go out and they handle with the developers based on our policy and our parameters that we set forth. Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? No? All right, who would like to make a motion?
I move the Board of Directors to adopt the proposed real estate advertisement policy.
Motion by Vice Chair Danzel?
I'll say it for them.
Seconded by Secretary Sloan, roll call vote.
Director Reyes?
Aye.
Director Lineback?
Aye.
Secretary Sloan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Danzel?
Aye.
Chair Yurwood?
Aye.
Thank you.
Shortest request for motion I've ever seen. All right, moving on to item G6.
Thank you, item G6 is to adopt Resolution 19/20-17, amending the full-time and part-time salary and hourly rate scales as required by California Code of Regulations, Section 570.5, and I'll turn it over to Human Resource Manager Andrea White.
Thank you, good evening Chair Yurwood and Board of Directors. I know this looks familiar, we seem to do this more frequently than I expect, but we do have a change that we'd like to make, and I guess these frequent returns of, of me bringing this to you is, means, it shows the growth and the changes that we have here at the district. So I'm bringing forth just a change to add one job description, and that is for office manager. So as you may have heard, we will have a vacancy at our district office of the administrative specialist, that would be Gail, and she's retiring this year, and we would like to replace this position, and we've done a lot of research, we interviewed all the managers, I did benchmarking, and we were trying to find the right title and the right job duties, and we spent more time on this position than, than most, some are straightforward, and we found that this was the right title. It's not frequently used in public agencies, but it, it is used, and I did find some benchmarks from other agencies in California, but it seemed to fit, it was all kind of encompassing of what we are requiring this position. And we're adding additional duties, more technical, higher level of administrative functions to this position, and we think, we noted that for me to fill this position around the time of the retirement, around November 1st, I have to post this job mid-August. So I have posted pending board approval, and it's already received an incredible response, so this will be interesting moving forward. I do want to let you know that this title, if you look at the Matt's budget, it's not listed on there. It is, it is 15% higher starting rate, but I do expect that what is actually paid out will be almost the same, because this person will start at this first, you know, beginning of the range, where Gail has been here a while, and she's on the top of the range, which will be almost the same. Plus, there are some vacancies, there's a number of them, that will ensure there's plenty of funds in salaries to cover this additional expense. So other than that, if you have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer them.
Any questions? Anyone care to make a motion?
I'll make the motion. I move the Board of Directors to adopt Resolution 19/20-17, amending the full-time and part-time salary and hourly rate scales as required by California Code of Regulation, Section 570.5.
Motion by Secretary Sloan?
Second.
Seconded by Director Reyes, roll call vote.
Director Reyes?
Aye.
Director Lineback?
Aye.
Secretary Sloan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Danzel?
Aye.
Chair Yurwood?
Aye.
Thank you.
Aye.
All right, thank you. All right, moving on to item H, Board of Directors items.
Thank you, item H1A is regarding training, and there was none over the last period, so we move on to H1B, Board Member Community Activities and Meetings Report.
All right, Director Reyes, would you care to start?
Yes, I would love to. I forgot that I did attend the party in the park, so I'm going to add that to my list. The party in the park was awesome. I mean, it was really nice to see the Lincoln Village pool being so u, so full, and yet, families all over, you know, it's almost like you're all in this one big pool, and yet, you were able to work one-on-one with your own kids, families were able to have their little space and get it done. It was really very nice, and I was very pleased to see what, how staff had put it together, and the activities and all that. It was a hot day, so that was good, that helped, with the pool water. I loved the, what was that, the, the, you had the, oh, the challenge?
A little obstacle course?
The obstacles course challenge, that was hilarious. You saw little kids and you saw grown adults trying to make that course challenge, and that was interesting. The other thing is, I was at the Riviera East Park ribbon-cutting ceremony, and Bonnie, I mean, that's a nice, a nice park. It's, looks beautiful, it really looks very inviting, it was very nice, and I thought that even the ribbon-cutting ceremony and all that was very well done. People were thrilled to be there, pictures all over, and it just looked so nice, plus, the surprise, which was the tennis court.
Basketball.
Uh, basketball court, I'm sorry, basketball court.
That was a surprise.
That was a wonderful surprise, the basketball court. It was redone and all that, so, anyway, I enjoyed those. It was a nice, this last month was a nice celebrations here. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Lineback?
Yes, since I did unfortunately miss the July board meeting, I included on my activities, the Rosemont Community Association meeting on July 11th, which I did in fact attend, and received a couple of queries from them regarding whether or not the pathway improvements at the Rosemont Community Park would interfere with the celebration of community that's happening in September, and then also, they are reinstituting what they call a welcome bag, having items for new members of the community, letting them know what's, you know, businesses, activities, and one of the things we wanted to be able to do is to put some things from the Park District in those welcome bags, especially, of course, the rec guide. And so I passed those along to the district and got good answers on that, and which I was able to communicate back to the RCA on the August 1st meeting. They were appreciative of the district's willingness to help participate in the welcome bags, and that the construction project would not interfere with their annual celebration of community. So that's kind of the report on both meetings.
Okay, thank you. Secretary Sloan?
It's my turn.
It is.
On, July 19th, I had the privilege of attending the Kappa's inaugural performance of Midsummer's Night Dream at Cordova High's Performing Arts Building. And it was a, I must say, it was a fabulous performance. It was, that evening was very well attended, we had a lot of dignitaries there. The matinee was well, it was well-attended, sort of. The next day was a little bit smaller in, in attendance, but I think as a first try, this is, just starting out, this is going to really take off, because I think it's a, it's a direction that the Park District and the School District and the community of Rancho Cordova really is going to start focusing on as they go ahead and develop their new civic center, and bring more cultural arts into the city.
Good.
Which I think is fantastic. So, after that, that's why I couldn't make the, for the first time, couldn't make the party in the park, and I was a little, I was torn. I really was, wanted to be cloned at that point. Then I, on the 31st, I did attend the ribbon-cutting for the walkways at Riviera East Park, for, and also they had dedication of a little library.
Yep.
Which was nice, the Park District installed that, and it was done, it was done by actually, Marie Backsiger's son helped do, was part of the design and build it, and the Breka organization helped put it together, and someone painted the Breka logo on the side, which was really well done, very well done, I must say. And, so that's, and I've gotten, I can't tell you how many compliments I've gotten about the walkways. People enjoy strolling around the park a lot more.
Nice and wide.
It looks nice. And then, now, and it's funny, you mentioned tennis courts, because that's still, that's the only, that's the one, the one that
I was hoping they'd drive their truck on the tennis court, but they had no reason to be there, so they did it on the, on the basketball court.
Right, right, right. Well, I wish, I wish they had driven, I wish they had driven through the tennis courts.
I know.
That would have been a, a dream come true. But I think there's a little bit more focus out at that park, it's got some areas that need to be looked at, the horseshoe pit seems, maybe, could go over, do something there, maybe botchy or something. And then on August 17th, which, it was a double day for me, but in the morning, I was able to attend the Rancho Cordova Athletic Association Retreat, and as Nina Senor was there also. And I think we were both very pleased with the amount of information that, that was, was exchanged, on top of a very informative PowerPoint by Peter Maroon, who's the athletic director for the, of the school district, the high schools and the, and the junior high schools, and the Folsom-Cordova Unified School District. He's the, the big shot who's doing, organizing all the sports and stuff, and activities. And it was really eye-opening, and I'm, I'm sure Nina will share it with you guys, because it, it really showed you a real, a trend in the direction that, that youth sports are going in, and some of the problems that we face, not only in the youth sports, but in the officiating ranks, where we are understaffed and unable to get enough qualified officials out to do their job for the, the kids, and that's why I think we're, we're actually possibly, I know there's, we might be offering some classes, giving people cred, creditable credentials in order to, to ref a soccer game or something like that through the district, is that correct? No? It's not, okay. Well, that was something I heard, it was something that they couldn't get here, but they had to go to Elk Grove to get, some kid who's doing soccer for the league. But anyway, that's, it might be a direction we go into, you know?
I have, if I could just ask a question on that. So the officiators of, of, of all these sports, are they provided by CRPD, or the school, or, I mean, who ends up, who ends up being the provider of that? I mean, where would you go if you were a sports league and you needed umpires or whatever?
Well, there's associations, like we use, it used to be called GSSA, but USA Softball, they provide our umpires for our adult softball league. For youth, I'm not positive here in Sacramento, any of the youth officials. We can find out some more information. For us, currently what we're doing is, is we're hiring our own officials for our youth sports. So Nina and her crew, basically, we have, we advertise for it on our website, and then people apply, and then we train them in-house, and they go ahead and they're going to officiate, like we did actually in the fall, I mean, in the spring, we had the youth basketball league, we had our own officials that we trained, and it was a great experience. So us training them in-house, in my opinion, is the way to go. If we could do all of our officials in-house, that would, that would be something that I would like to do. And it's really successful, and Nina and her staff have done a great job, and we'll have that for both the youth flag football this year in the fall, and then again, the youth basketball in the fall.
I think that would be a good idea, because then the quality and
You control it.
The code, and, you know, how they do it, and really, you can control. Does the RCA do that?
No.
No, okay.
We're definitely looking into, into that.
Who we?
Something, the RCA would probably look into something like that.
Oh, the RCA?
I was told that, I think in, for this area, there's like, well, I'll talk about football.
Okay.
And there's like only, like so many officials that they might have to go to Thursday games and Friday games and Saturday games in order to be able to, to cover it. So I think, I just know that my son just started the soccer league, and one of the kids on his team got cred, credentialed and down in Elk Grove to be a soccer umpire, and I think they make like 30 bucks a game, and I think it's only like an hour-long game. So it's pretty, pretty nice, good experience, and it's nice to see that.
Which obviously, for, for our teams here, our, the leagues and the sports teams, we do that, right? We, the goal is to train and, and have our own coaches.
Just for our internal programs.
For internal programs, that's what I mean.
So the organizations that rent our fields?
Yeah, they bring their own.
Exactly.
They have to get their own. Right, okay, great, wonderful.
But is that something that, we couldn't have that opportunity to train, and for them to possibly be able to get work somewhere?
Is this something we could possibly do offline, outside of board, board of director reports? This is not really?
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, we appreciate that.
Director Danzel, or Vice Chair Danzel and myself can tell you about youth sports organizations, how they do their referees and such.
Wonderful.
All right, getting back to that, that was a, just a wonderful presentation, and I really enjoyed it. Then I went to the, the soccer jamboree at Stone Creek Park, where my son was, had a game at 2:00 or something like that. You know, 1,000 kids show up out there and all day long, and it's, it's crazy. It's, it's the kickoff of soccer, it'll go for a couple months now, and, and the park looked really beautiful. It was very well taken care of, I must tell you. The next thing was on, the next day, I said next day, no, August 18th, I guess it was the next day. I, I attended at White Rock Park, Calvin Augusta had a, there was a celebration, was actually his, would have been his 19th birthday. He, he was a young man who, who tragically ended his life, and we graciously adopted to be able to put a memorial bench in, and there was 200-plus people out there. It was like a potluck, the, they supplied the, the main courses, and it was, they had a three-on-three basketball court in our, in our, we have four basketball, we have two full-court baskets, so they had four hoops to play, four half-court games at one time, and it was really, really good. Nina was also there, and, I mean, I was there for four hours, I just was, the energy was just exciting, and the, and the, the people were just very appreciative that we're, they were able to have that opportunity. It wasn't like a formal presentation or anything. It was just basically, the, the bench was there, they put some photographs up, they had, you know, the plaque was, was in, mounted in the, in the bench, and people just sort of sat there, and it, it overlooks the basketball courts, where Calvin spent a lot of his time playing basketball before dinner, and, and so it was very nice of us to, to, to have that move forward. I think that's all, that's it for me.
All right, Vice Chair Danzel?
Quick, two things. Director Reyes has already covered them both, so I'll stay quick. Riviera East ribbon-cutting and small library, both, both those projects turned out, turned out great, basketball court is, you know, phenomenal. Once again, we do a ribbon-cutting, it happens to be 100 and plus, but you know, it's just a tradition around here, I guess. It's either really windy or really hot, so, we, we get that. But it was nice to see the community out there. And then, party in the park, you know, it was great seeing the pool, all, all, full and people using it. Still got to get over there and see the rock project that happened. I know, General Manager Larkin spent some time painting a rock that night, so I want to go over and see what it looks like.
What it in the
But, and then also, I know we had a community board out there to talk about projects out, out there and see what the community had in mind for that park with what could be done, so I'd like to see how that turned out. But definitely a, a nice event. We need to find something, though, to, to boost it. We, you know, we've had some good years out there, and we've had some slower years, and I think we need to, the, the staff needs to look at it and figure out some things that we can do to, to boost, boost certain years, and, because unfortunately, there is other things going on that same, same night in this community, so we need to look at some other opportunities. Because unfortunately, there is other things going on that same, same night in this community. So we need to look at some other opportunities. That's all I've got.
Thank you.
All right. Oh, it's my turn, oh yeah. So, well, I won't beat the dead horses to, so to speak. But the Party in the Park was another nice event. It was nice to see the pool. And of course, it was warm, so it has to be. That's just a requirement, so. But I would agree, it seems like we need to kind of look at some things to kind of take it up a little bit, so. And you're right, there are a lot of other events going on in the community that people have to divide their attention and go to other things sometimes. Riviera East Park ribbon cutting, I'll kind of cut those two things and then do the other extra thing I have on here. It is a great park, beautiful. I don't know if I'd ever been to that park before, so, but-
You were just there for ribbon cutting.
Yeah, so, but yeah, really nice. Everything looked great. The little library was really nice, so. It's great to see so many folks out there on that warm day, so. And everybody managed to get there after that accident on the freeway, so, good lord. So, yeah. Check your route before you get on the road. That's my new motto. So the last thing I had was the LAFCO Special District Advisory Committee meeting on July thirtieth. There was a few topics. The big heavy hitter was everybody was kind of talking about their, their struggles with homeless folks and what to do. The biggest one was one of the water districts that's in charge of some of the levees where they're basically carving into the levees to make their homes. And they're, they're hard-pressed to do, do things about it. So Assemblyman Cooper had introduced AB 137 to add levees as protected areas so that they would have some recourse to keep people out of there and address those concerns. Because they're literally carving into the levees to make their homes. Not realizing, or realizing one way or the other that that could cause a levy to fail. It's a big struggle, so. The other thing we kind of talked about, which is an item that's coming up next, is the positions coming open on the actual LAFCO, Ron Greenwood, who is one of the current special district folks on it, is his position's coming up and he indicated he's not returning. So they're looking to, need to do an election to get some positions filled. And with that, that is all I have. So I guess we'll move on to item H2.
Thank you. Item H2A is to nominate a member of the Board of Directors to serve on the Sacramento Local Agency Formation Commission, LAFCO, for a four-year unpaid term and adopt Resolution nineteen slash twenty dash nineteen, supporting the nomination and service on the commission if elected. And as Chair Yearwood just mentioned, this is actually an opportunity regarding Office Number Six and also the alternate for Office Number Six and Seven. The commissioner term is four years and the alternate term is two years. The paperwork for these nominations is due on September nineteenth. And there are a couple of options available. If you look under the requested motions, a director could be nominated for one office or both, or no action needs to be taken if the board wishes not to. Thank you.
All right. So with that being said, I would be interested in running for that open position. I don't know if anybody else is interested. I don't know if there's, I know we can do, I can run for both. Or we can have one run, somebody run for the, me run for that one and then somebody do the alternate. I'm fine with either or. I don't know what anybody's thoughts are on that.
What happens if you win both?
I don't think I can do that, so.
I do have a question. It says alternate commissioner Office Six and Seven. So is it a total of three positions?
Yeah, the, the, one of the alternates moved, so he's no longer on whatever special district he was on. And I can't remember what was the story on the other one anymore. But yeah, the one commissioner position is open and both the alternates are open. So, yeah. So yeah, could we, in theory, nominate two people?
I think the title of the alternate for Six and Seven was just one.
Oh, it's just one person? Oh, okay. Okay. That might make more sense why I don't remember the other one then.
What's the role of the alternate?
To fill in with the-
It's all just one, the other guy can't make it?
So there's always representation, yeah. So if the actual commissioner can't be there, the goal is for the alternate to be there.
So talking with Gaye Jones about this position, because she approached me a month, month and a half ago about this. Because she, she would like to see Parks represented because it's been Water District so long. They seem to continue to win that, that seat. But that, that alternate in most of those people's mind is to actually sit in those meetings every time, regardless, because you want that continuity if that person isn't, you know, isn't gonna make, if the actual commissioner's not gonna make it, that alternate isn't walking in going, well, I have no clue what you guys are talking about. So it is, it is that full-time, basically, if you're going, that's what they're expecting.
Yeah, exactly. The alternate just wouldn't have a vote or anything when the actual commissioner's there.
So I was going to, my comment would be that we're really very, very busy here, all spread out and double-taking here. So if you, dear Chair Yearwood, would like to go for the position, I would love to make a motion to, to, what's my motion? To move that the Board of Directors nominate Chair Yearwood to serve on the Sacramento Local Agency Formation Commission, LAFCO, as both the special district commissioner, number, Office Number Six, and/or alternate the special district commissioner, Office Number Six and Seven. And adopt Resolution nineteen slash twenty dash nineteen, supporting the nomination and service on the commission if elected. Thank you so much for stepping up for also.
All right. Motion by Director Reyes, second. Second by Vice Chair Danzle. Roll call vote.
Director Reyes?
Aye.
Director Lineback?
Aye.
Secretary Sloan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Danzle?
Aye.
And Chair Yearwood?
Aye.
Yay. Good luck.
Careful what you volunteer for.
Yeah.
All right. So we're moving on to aye.
Thank you. Item A1 is the district-wide monthly progress report for August, and I'll turn it over to General Manager Larkin.
Great. Thank you. Just some updates from the past month. There's a lot of it, it's already been discussed. But just some other things just for note. Staff has met with the Little League and the city of Rancho Cordova to discuss design improvements to the baseball fields at Alstrom Park, the Little League baseball fields. We are still in discussions about any potential improvements on that field. But it is a staff work with those partners in order for us to realize if there's gonna be any differences on our property out at that location. Also, the PRMID Oversight Committee had an orientation for the new member who was appointed at the last meeting, Don Childs. So Clerk Jones and myself sat down with him and went over all of the details and great expectations we have for the PRMID board members. And I think he'll be a good fit. So that was great to get that done. We also have under park planning and development, the pool requires twenty-one permits from eight different agencies and landscape architects. Landscape Architect James was instrumental in completing permit application paperwork and coordinating documents required by the agencies with the LPA consultant. The current schedule anticipates bidding the project in winter twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, and awarding the contract in the first quarter of twenty twenty for the pool. Manager Taylor described how the pool project will impact the park during the next Fourth of July. And more coordination on that topic with the CCC is underway. So we're making sure that all of the potential stakeholders that currently have traditional programming at the park, that they're aware of the impact of this project well in advance, so they can plan accordingly for their larger events that take place there.
Would we also have to work with the school? The high school? I mean, because I know when they did their projects and all that, they worked closely with us.
Yeah, we're gonna, we have notification out to anyone that would typically have, mostly the CCC has that Fourth of July, it's a very large impact. It will also impact our events. I mean, we have the Easter egg hunt, we have a bunch of Halloween haunted event, I keep calling it haunted Halloween, but you get the gist. So the Halloween event at Hagan, there are gonna be some impacts. It's not to the entire park, it is to a section of the park. So our strategy is best to show them what the potential impacts would be instead of try to describe it. So we've done a really good job in having the staff go out there, actually just today. The CCC and our staff met out at the location to kind of give them a visual of what we are expecting to be the impact of it. So we're working with them to make sure that everyone is aware and plan accordingly because this pool project is going to trump the need. And it's, you know, once we're under contract, that's kind of it, so. But we're trying to work before we actually enter into contract with some of the logistics to see if we can make sure that it's a win-win for everyone. So thank you to the staff for making sure that that's communicated well. And there is a new sign that went up just this past week in front of the Hagan Community Center in that roundabout parking lot that describes the projects. We're really excited about that. And the pool was cleaned up. We did some weeding and we make it look presentable for it to start getting demolished soon. Ironically, yeah. Clean it up to mess it up.
Is that like cleaning your house before your housekeeper comes?
Exactly. That's a good analogy. On page one seventy-three, there is a list of our grants to note. The last one is Prop sixty-eight recreational infrastructure revenue enhancement funds. There's a new opportunity that we realized with Measure, or Prop sixty-eight, that we're eligible for. And that money is because we passed Measure J. And not all agencies did pass that measure. And so we are fortunate enough to be in a pool with those, which is a smaller amount of, you know, competition for us to go after additional funding, approximately estimated at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, so that won't hurt. So we're appreciative of that and we have an amazing grants team in park planning and development. Christina James and Andrew Saltmarsh have been awesome about attending those meetings and getting us the bags of coin that we're wanting here, so. I appreciate their efforts in that. The villages of Zinfandel pedestrian trail segments around the Alexander Collection is a hundred percent complete. And we are, CRPD planners were invited to speak at the upcoming annual conference of the California Local Agency Formation Commission, LAFCO, about innovations in service delivery. LAFCO requested CRPD present our innovative methods to include community in our design process. So it's a great honor and I'm excited. I believe Laura Taylor is it. She was the one who put her finger on the nose the last, so she is going to be speaking on our behalf and representing us. In addition to that, we found out this week, there's another CSDA group in Gold County, or I think it's Gold County, that they're inviting us to talk about how you can be grant-ready. So meaning that what do we do as an agency that, because we're very successful at getting grants here. So we're going to, actually Christina James has been the last person to touch her nose in that case. And she'll be presenting on behalf of us to executive staff in Gold County through the CSDA conference that they're having up there. So we are definitely shining stars in our agency and it's a proud thing to have our staff be requested to speak on our behalf for their expertise. And then with that, I'll turn it over to Jill Nuns for the Parks and Recreation Department.
Good evening. The Neil Orchard Senior Activities Center was built in nineteen eighty-seven. And to Heather's knowledge, the fascia and gutters have not been replaced, so.
Or cleaned.
Or, yeah. With that new facility supervisor, Gary Atchison, I can promise you that things will change and that those gutters will get cleaned, so guaranteed. Hagan Community Park, we do have the dredging of the pond project that's going on right now. It will take a couple of months. The pond is now, it's not, it's dry, but not as dry as we need it to be to actually start the project. So we've gotten some, you know, inquiries about the pond and the relocation of the fish and the wildlife that might be in that pond. That pond was not built to have fish in it, but what we did do was if we did see some of the fish, we did relocate them to the pond that is allowed to have fish. Jim and his staff, they didn't notice too many turtles or any other kind of, you know, species within that pond. It sounded like maybe some community members did their own fishing or whatever they wanted to do as the pond was getting drained. But we can guarantee that, you know, we tried our best to make sure that the fish got moved safely over to the other pond. But once again, it's not a fishing pond. We prefer not to have fish in that pond. But this is gonna be a couple-of-month project. I'll be back next month to give you an update on it. But we probably will not see water back into that pond until late October, beginning of November. Yeah, okay. Director Sloan, Secretary Sloan already kind of updated you on the Calvin Augusta celebration on Sunday. But I wanted to let you know that the family was honored that we helped out with the bench and installed the bench. They have nothing but good things to say about the celebration and the park staff and the recreation staff and everybody that was involved. It sounds like they want to do this on a yearly basis. You know, every year, come back on the same date and do this celebration. So it sounded like it was a wonderful day, which we appreciate everyone's help making sure that this project get off, you know, off the ground. Recreation and parks, just, you know, it's summer, we're wrapping up the summer, everyone's busy wrapping up and getting ready for the fall. The Cordova Golf Course, lots of improvements at the golf course. I'd encourage you to go out and see, you know, what we've done. We've basically done a lot of cleaning up of stuff that's been around for years and years and years. Unfortunately, we got some news that the golf carts are, still haven't been shipped to us. We're hoping still by the end of August to get those golf carts. The golfers are anxiously waiting for those golf carts. We're trying to be patient as, as much as we can. So hopefully they'll get here by Labor Day. Fingers crossed.
Where are they coming from?
They're actually coming from Georgia. And then they're gonna be shipped to SoCal where they get a little bit more assembly there. I guess the tops, is that correct? Yeah, the canopies. And then they get shipped from SoCal to here.
Maybe we could, we could fly there and drive them back.
Yeah, oh boy. How many times?
That's the delay. That is the delay. They're actually driving the golf carts here. Yeah.
So, yeah. So we're keeping the golfers updated at the golf course. We hope they get here soon. The other thing we still don't have is a restaurant concessionaire. So we've gotten some bites, knock on wood. We hope that some of them, you know, pan out. But unfortunately, nothing solid at this point. So if you know anyone that's interested in running a restaurant at the golf course, please have them give me a call. And that concludes my report.
I have a question. Have you ever thought about looking into possibly getting a food truck out there that does hot dogs and hamburgers?
We have. We've started to contact a whole bunch of different businesses to run operations. We're contacting caterers, the culinary school, food trucks, breweries. We've, we've put it, pretty much put it out there. We will just continue to look at different options, but send them our way and we'll certainly have good conversations with them.
Sacramento MOFO, is that what they call themselves? They're, I mean, they have a bunch of different food trucks in their association, I guess is what it is.
They do, yeah.
All right. Anyone else have any questions, comments? All right. I guess we will move on to Jay.
So just to quickly review the board invitation page, we have the Friday night concerts hosted by the Cordova Community Council at seven PM at the Village Green every Friday in August. We have National Senior Citizens Day on August twenty-first, that was today this morning, at the senior center. Doggy Day in the Park is Saturday, September fourteenth, at Hagan Community Dog Park at eight AM to noon. And then the Rosemont Annual Community Celebration at Rosemont Community Park, Saturday, September twenty-first at nine AM.
I'm gonna add to that list a last-minute update in a meeting that we're gonna be hosting next week, August twenty-eighth. We're gonna be partnering with the Rancho Cordova Police Department, especially the homeless outreach- We're gonna be partnering with the Rancho Cordova Police Department, especially the homeless outreach team, the hot team, to offer a safety meeting over at White Rock Park. So that is gonna be from 6:00 to 7:30 at White Rock Park in the gazebo and, or pavilion. And basically, it's an opportunity for the residents in that neighborhood to come out, share with us any concerns that they have for safety in that particular neighborhood and for us to be able to answer some questions regarding some of the concerns that have been brought to our attention this past summer, so. I'm, you're invited to attend, of course, and if you choose to do so, just, I will be there, let me know and we'll make sure that you guys have a good seat.
All right.
I think I would like, if, if it's okay, to just make a comment. I, I love the articles and the approach that Katie is taking to these, you know, to market the district. I just, it's, she's doing a fabulous job and, you know, it almost, you know, I appreciate what many, many, many of the district staff do. I think you're all a talented group of people, but I did just think once in a while to call out an individual doesn't hurt and she's really doing a great job.
Yes, absolutely.
Yep, I totally agree and support it because remember, we've been wanting and needing and, and hoping to get a marketing arm. And I think from the guide and all, it's just like, is very different than the articles and, and it is. I've read a lot more and it's the same and well-written, thank you.
I'll make sure Katie knows, thank you for the compliment.
All right, we all done in that regard? Okay. All right, so seeing if there's no other business, we'll adjourn this meeting to the next regular meeting of the Board of Directors of the Cordova Recreation and Park District on Wednesday, Sep- ah, September 18th, 2019 at 6:30 PM.